Good evening. Welcome to the January 28, 2014 zoning board of appeals meeting. Let's call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of our December 11, 2013 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Any discussion, edits, modifications? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? No, that's unanimous for four, is it? Three zero, four zero? Do we have four? Barry's over there, right? Okay. No old business. New business. Like to introduce to the town our two newest zoning board of appeals members. Michael Valencourt and Michael Tedema Woodland.
Weedland.
Weedland. There you go. Welcome. Look forward to having you join us in our merry little trip through the ordinance.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next, it is my great pleasure to announce that Josh Carver has agreed to serve as a new chair of the ZBA. And I can take a seat at the far end of whichever table I will choose to have me. I would like to, I don't know if we did anything as far as having a, who's our current secretary?
It's Bacon. It was either Chris or Jeff.
Okay. But we had one.
We did.
Good. So we need a new one.
Yeah. We need motions for both of them.
I know. So let's deal with the chairmanship since we, I at least, you know, greased that skid somewhat. So have a motion to nominate Josh Carver as the new chairman.
So moved.
Joanne, can I have a second? Barry, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposition?
Do I vote?
No, you're, no. Okay. Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to take over arm twisting for the secretary? Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Do we switch seats now?
We can.
So the last bit of new business before moving on to the one pending matter in front of the board is the election of a secretary. Do I have any volunteers?
I'll volunteer. Since I won in the debate.
Thank you, Jared. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Joanne as our secretary.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
It's working.
All right. All in favor? All right, so that is, Eric, five, five nothing in favor of Joanne as the secretary. Okay. So moving on to the one matter pending before the board is D3 on the agenda. It's to hear the request of Paula McNulty of 50 Market Street, Suite A, number 252, South Portland, Maine, for an approval to reconstruct, expand a non-conforming structure at Two Beacon Lane, map U14, lot 45, per section 19-4-3, B3 of the zoning ordinance. And before we have, or before we open this up for Ms. McNulty, can we have a quick summary of how this got here first?
Yes.
Thank you.
Paula McNulty contacted me several months ago and made me aware of plans she had for her house. The house has been uninhabited and dilapidated for the past couple of years due to water damage. And Paula would like to renovate and expand the house based on the plans that you see in your packets. And you can see that a small section of the front, of the garage encroaches into the front setback. And you can see that a corner of the house encroaches into the side setback. No part of the proposed structure encroaches further into these setbacks, so a variance isn't necessary. But there will be additional floor area in the setbacks which requires an approval under 19-4-B3.
Was it additional floor area enclosed? Was that floor area in addition to deck space that was already there? Or was it basically just enclosure of existing? Like if you counted the deck space as floor area, it was the same?
Deck space and floor area are different in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And so, let's see.
But if you, I know that they're different under the ordinance, but what I was trying to figure out was if you counted the deck area that was in, on the historic structure, would the new floor area that's non-conforming be roughly equivalent?
Yeah. I think it would be roughly equivalent, may even be less actual area of encroachment because if you, she's reducing the area of encroachment on the garage side of the structure. And she's pulling back on the deck side of the structure as well. So I didn't crunch that number. But the floor area is increasing, but I, it looks like the actual footprint of encroachment is probably decreasing.
Okay.
I guess we'd like to now open it up for Ms. McNulty and anybody speaking on her behalf to give us some further background regarding this.
Peter, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, if you want to step up to the podium.
This is my architect, Paula McNulty. If anything I can't answer, perhaps you can answer more easily.
Absolutely. And is there anything that you'd like, before we open it up to questions, is there anything that you'd like to add to what Ben said? Anything else about the history of the house, you're living in the house?
Right. I mean, essentially, Ben has the picture correctly. We've had the house since 1998. And when our middle son graduated high school, we've been commuting back and forth between New York and Maine. We decided we'd give it a try and see if we can live in Maine, I mean, in New York. We had been coming back on the weekends. Then when we had a really cold spell a few years back, three years exactly, actually, one of the pipes that was, they put them on the outside of the house, it froze, it burst, and then it ran for a couple of days. Then the mitigation company came in and did a subpar job. And we didn't know that until we went in and we were ready to build. And mold had completely overtaken the entire house. So we just have now gotten everything to where it's mitigated and we're ready to, you know, start returning to our home that, you know, we haven't been able to use.
Thank you.
What is the total square footage of the remodel?
Is it 45? Yes. It's about 4,500 square feet.
Okay. And you know approximately what the floor space was of the current house?
Pretty much similar.
Same?
We had five, I'm sorry.
We'll have opportunity for the public to comment. So if you could just hold any extraneous comments until after the McNulty's had.
If it's different, I'm not aware of the issue. We have five bedrooms and three bathrooms to start, and that's pretty much what we're proposing.
And one thing I was curious about is just on the drawings and looking at the, I think on the south elevation, it looked like the height was about, recalling, like 32 feet was the height, I think, from the south elevation from the grade to the top. And I'm just curious where that chimney is sitting in relation to, I didn't have my ruler with me, but how much higher is the chimney than the?
Approximately three feet higher. It has to be three feet away and then three feet higher from the peak. So it would be 35.
So is the peak of that chimney at 35 feet?
Yes.
Was there a building permit applied for within one year? Is that, I feel like we've talked about this before, but I've forgotten that.
The structure is still standing on the property.
But this is a complete rebuild? I mean, it's being demoed down to the foundation?
No. The house is going to remain. We're just going to bring the roof line all even. And so we're going to raise the roof so that it's all, it's not going to be much higher than it is right now. It's pretty much the same. And it's just all going to be one height. The original structure has been built on to many, many, many times. And so as a result, we have, I think, maybe about seven different roof levels.
Yes.
And it's allowed for all kinds of damage to occur in the eaves. And we just want to eliminate that so.
So this is not a tear down?
No. The garage is coming down.
Yeah.
The garage, as you can see by the photos, it's no good.
Okay.
And the pad in the garage needs to be torn up too.
I also wanted to mention that I do have a certified survey here. It was not included in the packet, but if anyone wants to see a stamped survey.
Does that have information, or perhaps Ms. McNulty, do you have information on how close the existing deck is to the property line today?
Which property, which side?
I'm sorry, the deck on the, I think it's the west. The deck, it appears to be, I don't know, less than 10 feet from the property line?
Can you tell? I think.
The upper deck on the far left? That's right.
Right. That's what I'm trying to.
I think it's a little bit more than 10 feet.
Little bit more than 10 feet? And the proposed condition?
Will be reduced. If you can see the page two. This, this area here is all gone, which is currently, the stair to the deck is beyond the setback, but we are reducing that was. So we are reducing the setback.
So you'll go from a condition today where you're somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 feet from the property line to maybe more?
14.
14 or so feet from the property line?
I can read a map, but just looking at the application, just when I'm looking at the side setbacks, they're all saying 25 plus. So I mean, I can see what this is. I guess I was a little thrown off initially by just the application because the sides are all 25, 25 or 25 plus, fronts are 30.
For proposed?
No, both current and proposed.
Current and proposed. I mean, you read the application, it's like there's kind of change in the footprint.
Okay. Yeah, that's an error on the application. The, based on my tape measure, the existing deck is approximately six feet from the line. And the proposed structure will be about nine. So we're going from six feet from the line to nine feet from the line, roughly.
And you said there were five bedrooms?
Yes.
And the septic is adequate for five bedrooms?
No. We actually, I believe in your packet, there's also a septic. We're going to.
I saw that. It said four to five bedrooms. That's why I was.
Right. I mean, the septic that's there is the same one that was original to the house. And it never really served us very well with three bathrooms. So we're just taking this opportunity to just put in a better one that would serve that without any problems.
But you're not changing the number of bathrooms?
No.
So you're putting in a bigger septic to serve the same number of bathrooms? Are you removing trees or?
We are going to need to remove a couple of trees on our property, yes. There's, I think, three to accommodate the septic as well as everything else.
So they're kind of over by the, your pool area?
The septic will sit down from.
Right. The trees you're going to remove were approximately, are they?
Yes. That's, I think he notes the elm, something about an elm, and that is on the lower half by boughs, I think.
Pines, two, maybe three pines. That just listed on the application. Type an amount of vegetation to be removed.
Is the septic, is the new septic going in the same location as the existing?
No. No, it's going in a different location. One downhill a little bit more. Yeah. Once everything gets done, we plan on landscaping it again.
Yep.
Especially the apple tree. An apple tree.
Our ordinance, I'm sure you're meeting this standard, but it specifies that trees removed for relocation must be replanted with at least one per, that's at least three feet in height.
Right.
Where's the current septic?
It's closer to the house. It's, let's see, if you look at.
Looking at this one.
At that one?
Yeah.
It's right, see those two little dots behind the five, six?
Got them.
Around 12.
And are you moving more down? I'm just trying to read it off your septic application, but are you moving more down below the pool, if you will?
Yes, it'll be right around, right around here. Oh, sorry, hold on. So this is, it's going down and this is the, we'll be right about here.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have any information on, and this may have been asked, on the footprint area? And where I'm going with this is the building coverage on the lot, the percentage of the lot that the building will cover?
I don't. Percentage of the lot that the building is? We have the square footage of the lot.
Yeah. I guess the reason I ask is there is a maximum building coverage requirement in the ordinance. And without that information, it's a little unclear whether or not it meets it. I'd recommend that if the zoning board chooses to approve this, there's a condition that the maximum building coverage on the property is limited to 20% as stated in the zoning ordinance. That's not a variance. That's a general requirement in the zoning ordinance. And 20% of the lot size would be a building footprint of 4,878 feet.
Say it again?
4,878 square feet would be the allowable building footprint. And I think the building footprint proposed is significantly smaller than that, but it's good to dot that i regardless in the approval.
And the building footprint includes decks, right?
Yes.
You said you had some information on floor area? Was that what was discussed previously? I heard the number 4,500 thrown out?
The total floor area is about 4,500.
Okay. So the footprint's going to be less than 4,800?
Is there any, are you doing anything to the grade of the lot itself?
I can't speak to that.
We are not proposing any grade change on the abating property. On this side, we are not changing any grade here. We may have to change the grade on this, on this Lighthouse Point Road side to adjust the grade to bring up driveway.
So the driveway is moving? The driveway is moving from Beacon Lane to Lighthouse Point Road, is that?
It's a consideration, yeah.
Yes.
But it's not, that decision hasn't been made yet?
No.
I guess it'd be kind of nice to know whether driveway is going. I mean, you're, if it's, I think in the application, I got the sense that it was, that the EGRIS was coming, was going to change over from Lighthouse Point Road from Beacon.
That is and was our desire, but, you know, in an effort to make everything, you know, any more easier, smooth. I wasn't quite sure what was involved with changing the driveway over or if it was possible. So I thought it best to include it because we were talking about it and considering it. But it's not, you know, set in stone. Perfectly willing to leave the driveway where it is. But I would like to have the option, maybe. Our driveway's not very, it's very short.
So if it, if you continue to have your access off Beacon, then I guess I'm, I guess I'm assuming the light blue is the garage?
Yes.
And I guess I'm also assuming that, assuming that the garage doors are there?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Yeah. All right.
They are meaning facing out onto Lighthouse.
Yeah. I should give you a direction, but I.
No, I don't, it was not on yet.
So if you're coming off Beacon, you're going to have to effectively, you know, loop the driveway around to get to the.
Right. I mean, or we just change the interior around a little bit to accommodate the car bays on the Beacon Lane side as opposed to the other side.
Just change the orientation of the garage.
So that, in that case, the driveway would slide down closer to the intersection?
I think that the driveway would be off of Lighthouse Point Road if we, if we were able or if we did go that route, the driveway would be off of Lighthouse Point.
Coming directly into the proposed garage? So pretty much a straight shot?
Yeah.
Out from the garage to Lighthouse Point Road?
Yes.
Do you know how far that would be from that corner?
From the corner? I don't know.
From which corner?
I think from the corner of Beacon and Lighthouse Point. Is that what you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like about. Depends on where the doors are.
Yeah.
More than 40 feet.
I think more than 40 feet.
Looks like 16 to 20, I mean, it looks like maybe an inch, maybe an inch and a half.
From?
From where?
I don't, maybe we're not thinking of the same.
If I'm looking at this plan right here, and I'm assuming that this is where the garage bays are, and then I draw a straight line here coming off that, and this pin is the corner of your lot, right? And then I'm just using my fingers, but I think that's roughly an inch, certainly not two inches. And then it says it's 1/16 equals one foot. So that would be roughly 16 to 20 feet. Right?
Does anybody have a ruler?
My. I mean, it's.
To the pin?
There is that 30-foot dimension for the setback, Joanne, to give you a little sense of the scale of this thing. So it might be a little more than.
I was looking to the pin on their lot.
Mm-hmm.
Which is an.
Where will the garage doors be? If you're looking at, if you're looking at the garage structure from Lighthouse Point Lane, will they be on the right, in the middle, on the left?
They would be in the middle, where it says line of setback?
Yep.
Okay. Then if you just go to the building from where that arrow ends, that would be where the garage bays would be. And of course, the other option is to leave the garage bays where they are now. So that would.
So on that, I mean, if they were to stay where they are now, is the, is the grade going to change that much?
Less change in what they are right now. If you keep the driveway on a Beacon Lane, it's less change. However, if you decide to put on a Lighthouse Point Road, that will require retaining wall. It's drop towers north side, so.
If you leave it where it is now, does that mean that that gray shaded area that's within the setback, that I'm assuming is the existing garage right here, would then stay there? It would not be deleted, this part right here?
No, I think we can keep this light blue.
And just put the bays here instead of here?
Right.
So we're still reducing the non-conformity.
And that's effectively where they are now?
Yes.
Yes.
If the driveway was going to be moved to Lighthouse Point Road, that would have to be approved by the director of public works. He would analyze it for traffic safety.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, you know, that would not be part of this approval? It would be a separate permit to move the driveway?
I guess my concern there is impacts to views if they've got to change the grade and everything.
Right.
Over there on that road, that's why I was concerned about it.
That's why I asked initially.
You mentioned that the square footage of the new proposed structure will be about the same as 4,500 square feet that's currently existing. Can you offer a little bit more definition on that? Is it going to be more? Is it going to be less?
It's going to be about the same, only because if you look at it, we're reducing, like, for example, the garage. It's getting pushed back. Right now, it's overlapping. And it's, it's the same, it's just getting moved back a little bit, you know? We're not so much increasing the size, with the exception to this light blue area, you know, on the right-hand side of the second page. That is the. That is the only additional space that we're adding to the structure.
So that does look like an addition to the existing floor area?
That is additional. Well, that is additional, yes.
So potentially over and above the 4,500 square feet that's existing?
I don't think it's above. That do you?
It should be within the required, say, coverage. But we are expanding the area. However, we like to say we are not expanding the nonconforming area. It should be less in a floor area that is... And we're expanding to towards the backside of the house, which is allowed expansion.
Thank you.
For perspective on the application, the section of this that triggers zoning board approval is the infill of the upper deck. If you look at the first page of the drawing, it's roughly maybe 12 by 8 or 12 by 9 squaring off of that side of the house. The rest of the proposal complies with the zoning ordinance for a building permit. It's that one section of squaring off that side of the house is what triggers the zoning board review. How, you know, how that affects your review is up to you.
And then I'd like to mention in a definition in the ordinance, Section 19-1-3, infilling the structure is considered not expanding nonconformity in this definition. So if you go Section 19-1-3, on the bottom line, included in this allowance expansion, which infill irregularity-shaped structures, that tells me that can be infilled.
That's under the definition for what?
Yes. For increasing nonconformity of the structure.
Sure.
I don't think you're increasing the nonconformity of the structure. If you were, then this would be a variance proceeding. But I would agree that you're not increasing nonconformity.
Because we're staying within 20% of the floor area? 20% of the total area?
No, because they're not getting closer to the property line than they already are. And based on the definition that she just cited, it would not be an increase in nonconformity.
Although, if you look at the third page, SK3, the line is going up to the tops of the chimney, not just to the existing roof line.
I mean...
So it's not just squaring off the structure, it's taking it up a little bit further.
I mean, to be honest with you, the thing that I'm wrestling with is I keep... I'm not even flipping there. I'm looking at the second and third pages of these roof lines. And, I mean, I don't have my ruler with me, but it just seems that the overall area, volume of this house is increasing... Schematically, I look as if it's increasing dramatically. Maybe I'm overreading it, but that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, I'm looking at this east elevation profile.
Well, currently, it's a traditional cape with... And I've never been upstairs in the structure. I did a brief walk-through downstairs. I was probably there for a total of five minutes. But just based on the pictures we're looking at, it's, you know, a traditional cape, and they wanna get, you know, a full second story versus a traditional, small Cape Cod second story.
But I think that's why I'm wrestling with what the total square footage of this thing is. I mean, I just... Okay, it's 4,500 now. I suppose, okay, we're maxed out at 4,878, you know? Can't be greater than 20%, you know?
Well, those are two different things, though, because the floor area that's permissible is just the footprint area, so just the space for the first floor. When we're talking about the overall floor area of the whole structure, I'm sure they've got a second floor, which is what takes them up to that number. I'm guessing that their footprint area is something around 2,500, maybe not even that.
If I could address your concern about the fact that we're making it all one level. Right now, the ceilings are very, very low. Like, in one room, they're really, really low. And then on the second floor, we're just going to raise the ceiling on the first floor up, which makes the floor on the second floor go up.
Sure.
So it's not we're going to be adding... We're not gonna be adding this way. We're just going to be making the ceiling taller. But not much taller than it is already. You know, the tallest part of the roof is there. So we're just making it all that same.
I could get... I could run upstairs and get the assessment card if the board would like some current floor area numbers.
Well, that may or may not be necessary. But if I look at the... So I'm looking at your south elevation. And we've got the existing ridge, which is 80 feet 6 inches. And if I look at your scale, it looks like that would go up approximately...
A foot?
Four, five, five feet. So I'm looking at your existing ridge. It looks like it's over by the garage.
Right.
Five feet, 3 inches.
Five feet, 3 inches, okay.
Is that gonna be living area over the garage? Or is that just for the attic?
Yes, we're just taking the master bedroom that used to be on one end, and we're moving it over the garage.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're looking at map SK2, which is the second map shaded in blue, if we look at the southeastally corner of that, the area of that deck that's going to be rebuilt and changed, the area that's hanging into the setback, it sounds as though that is going to... That's gonna go up a few feet.
I'm sorry, one more time, I'm exactly where I was.
We're looking at SK2, the easterly corner of the structure of the home.
Here, okay.
That's hanging into the 25-foot setback. That already is admittedly hanging into the 25-foot setback to a certain extent.
This one, right?
Looking at the opposite end from the garage.
The one that is not gridded, right? The one that's just blue?
It is a bright blue.
That would be a new altogether. That would be a new structure. That would be the new garage.
Right, and that's going up beyond what the existing...
It's going up five... What did you say, 5 inches?
No, that's going up more like... It looks like more like 10 feet.
10 feet, okay, sorry. Well, if it's over here, right? We're over here. Right, so this is going from 80. We didn't have to... Yes, right?
Which elevation, Mike? Which elevation?
You know, I wasn't looking...
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yes.
I guess you can tell us which elevation. I was looking for the SK2 map.
Yes, that's the garage with the bedroom above. And that roof line would be raised. This is the current garage, which has no second floor. It's just single...
I'm looking at the other end of the map, which I believe is the easterly end of the map, although the direction isn't shown. I'm looking at SK2.
The far left.
The far left. There we go, far left.
Far left? Okay, I'm sorry.
You're right, you're right. I'm giving you the wrong direction, my apologies.
Okay, so...
Far left.
The far left.
Far left, it's about a foot taller, a foot on the left.
How many additional feet?
One. One feet.
One foot.
Yes.
Let me ask it a different way. Of your various elevation profiles, which elevation profile reflects SK2 on the left side?
SK2 on the left side, which is the west...
West elevation, okay, SK4.
Yes.
Okay. And that's the side on which you have an abut?
Right. And then also, the chimney location is not... Yes, we will keep the same chimney. So the height of the chimney will be not as tall as it's shown. It was... Originally, we were going to move a chimney.
So you're keeping the existing chimney?
Yes.
If I'm looking at this south elevation profile?
Yes.
And I'm looking at this box right here, is that the nonconforming area that's getting enlarged?
Nope.
No?
That's the new proposed garage with master bedroom, which is within the setback, the side setback.
And that's shown here on the opposite end from the existing garage? So are you telling me that the new garage is going on the opposite end of the house?
No, it's the same side.
Okay, so...
This side here, are you...
I'm talking about right here on the south elevation, the opposite end of the home from the garage. Is that the nonconforming piece that's getting filled in more?
It's where the deck is, right here.
So the partialy it is on the backside of the... So the north side.
Just on the backside?
On the north side.
That's where there presently is deck, and we're pulling it back.
I guess what I'm struggling with is not knowing the square area of nonconformity that's being increased. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's just that one side. The nonconforming isn't being increased.
Well, it is in that one area.
No, no, it's being reduced in that one area, right?
Seems because of the... Because of the definition that we led, that the... Anything we consider increase of nonconformity only for the lateral expansion.
Right.
Meaning that the infill or the volume or the height increase is not considered. So the height here is being infilled is not, by definition, not considered as an increase of nonconformity.
But one of the things that we need to consider as part of our deliberations are the visual impacts from this approval, from the changes, which to my mind does include changes to the volume of the nonconformity. And that's why I'm trying to figure out how much that changes.
Okay. Bring the roof up to even... So if you look at it and you see where the roof goes now, and then where it goes down, so it would be bringing that one side where the deck now is, bringing it up to meet the roof line that exists now.
And it is this corner right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Right there, right now, is a deck and an eve. Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, yeah, there's a photo of it to give you a better idea. It might help a little bit.
Yeah, the second page of the photos, the top photo, shows that area.
Essentially, right here.
Gotcha.
Right, and if you see there's a... Where that eve is behind the banister, I mean, the deck. We're essentially bringing the deck back from the side to where that first post is.
So on the first picture, if I were to draw a line basically right here, that's what you're infilling, right?
Can I come over and just take a look a little closer?
Yeah. And I'm just kinda roughly drawing it. But basically, this is what you're infilling.
Yes, see where this post is right here?
Yep.
Okay, so this is where the deck from here or here is going. And so you can't see it very well.
The next picture, John. Is it this one? I think so. Is that what we're looking at?
Right here.
Okay, so you see where this is right here? So we're essentially just bringing this like this and like that.
Okay.
So when you see it, that's what that is. The deck right here, this here is that eve.
Okay, but this is actually coming more like up here, right? This?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, since we're doing a little bit of show and tell here, on the east elevation, I'm just looking at where the garage is currently. And then we've got the proposed profile. Where approximately is that on the pictures?
Again, can I come and show you?
Sure. So it's kind of this area here that I'm...
So this is... This here is the garage now.
Yeah.
And this is the profile of the existing. So we're going to come up to where this right here is going to meet the roof line. We have a bit here.
That's...
So this is just gonna...
Okay, so this depiction, though, is looking at that from over here?
From the other side, from this side. From this side.
Are there any more questions for Ms. McNulty? And any, any final comments at this time?
I don't think so. I mean, I just really would like to get the house built, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to, uh, open the meeting up for, um, public comment, if anybody, uh, has any, uh, comment. I'd just like, ask that you, uh, identify yourself and then please come to the podium to comment. Yes, sir? Yes, please.
My name is Jim Johnston, I'm here with my wife, we live across the street, we're at Two Lighthouse Point Road. So I have their house in my view, looking out the, on my office window, so I see a lot of it. Uh, and, uh, my background, I was about 25 years a distributor for Lindell Cedar Homes, and designed and sold about 250 houses over those years, all good houses. So I have a couple of questions. One is, I don't understand why there isn't an exact count of the square footage of living space. You know, taking into, if that's a factor in zoning here, and if, if that's a consideration, if that would require variance if you were increasing the square footage of living space, I suspect it, and I'm, I'm disturbed that there is no exact answer, and it hasn't been checked, that's one concern, the other concern is, uh, it seems, from where I'm sitting back here, as if there's a, at least a possibility of the driveway entering from Two Lights Road. And if you're looking at that on a two-dimensional drawing, that might work, but there's quite a drop in grade from the floor of the present garage to Two Lights Road, it's dropping, uh, rapidly at that point from Beacon Street down along that side of the house. So I would, my guesstimate would be you'd have a rise of maybe 15 feet from the curb to the garage, and I don't know if that's feasible in the distance that's allowed there. I know you mentioned that the, that has to be approved by the, somebody, that's somebody's jurisdiction. If that would be, I think that ought to be, uh, approved before you grant a permit. Those are my only two concerns, and my instinct, looking at the pictures of the house as drawn quickly, is that it's much bigger, and I don't know if that's an issue at hand, but I think that's the way it is. So those, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Um, any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, I'm Jackie Allen, I'm McNulty's neighbor, I, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I did want to ask a question. Were you were saying, uh, you would have to raise the elevation, were you adding on that new addition? But yet you've got all the roof line, does that mean that the roof line is going to stay the same as the house? So it's all one level, or is that elevation going to increase the height of that, that new addition that's going on? Can we tell from that?
We'll bring Ms. McNulty back up.
Oh, okay.
Have an opportunity to...
And then just the other question was, you know, the way the drawing is right now, if you change, and where the, you know, the garage and the driveway is on Beacon, and you're right, it is a considerable drop-down, and if you were to not move the driveway over there, does that mean you have to redesign the house because the garage doesn't look like it's there in your current drawing? Does that mean it would have to be? And I didn't know if that was then subject to another review, so I just, I, I wasn't clear on those two points, so I was trying to be more informed so I could understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ken Lane, I live at Five Beacon Lane. Thank you all for your deliberations in service to the community. You must need the wisdom of Solomon to do your job, because you wrestle with one of the age-old questions, the rights of the individual versus the rights of the community. Uh, I live at Five Beacon Lane, across the street from the house, and I would just like to say, I think it's unfortunate that the roof line is being raised and extended, blocking the views of three families in perpetuity who live here year-round for a four-to-five-week summer residence from a New York family, at least that's what we were told. So, uh, I don't know what the answer is to the dilemma, but thank you for your efforts.
Any other comments, yes, sir?
My name's Dave Allen, I'm the, uh, other half of Jackie. Um, we live at Four Beacon Lane, have, we built the house 30 years ago, and have lived there since then, and raised our family, and feel blessed to be able to have a house like we have and a place like we have. Thank you also for the proactiveness shown by the town in letting us know that this was happening. We obviously have a vested interest, we live right next door, and for a long period of time, as Paula pointed out, the house has been unlivable and dilapidated, and it's become really an eyesore for the neighborhood. So I appreciate the fact that, uh, the McNaltys are doing something about it, we're supportive of that situation being taken care of. Um, on the positive side of the equation, a couple of things, one, um, I also appreciate the fact that they're trying to stick to the same footprint. We had grave concerns that something dramatic was going to happen, and although I truly believe that the house is going to increase fairly significantly in size due to the addition of the garage and the addition of the non-conforming space, um, it is still pretty much on the same footprint, so we definitely appreciate that. And the fact that the roof line, according to the plan that I've seen, is only supposed to go up one foot from where the existing roof line is. So those are all positives from my standpoint. The only negative, obviously, is something that Ken has alluded to, and that with the expansion of the space, the addition of the garage, and the single roof line, um, that does have an impact on our view of the lighthouse and the Lightkeeper's House. I don't know that there's anything that can be done about that, but I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we've lived there for 30 years, we've enjoyed that. And I don't know if anything can be done to change the impact that could result from that new addition and the higher roof line. But if there is, we'd certainly, uh, be supportive of that. So bottom line, um, thank you for the ability or the opportunity to, uh, to give input. We are supportive of the project and getting it a better-looking place, um, but we still have concerns about the impact on our views and the size of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any, any other comments from the public? All right, uh, Ms. McNulty, you may come back up.
So, see if I can remember everything. In regard to the driveway, uh, we've already discussed, I think that we were toying with the idea of the Two Lights. It's more likely than not, we're going to keep it where it is on Beacon. That was just, in the original phases, we were thinking of what we could do, best usage of the property. Ken, I'm not a New Yorker, first of all. I'm raised in Boston, and we moved into this house in Cape in 1998. Two of my sons, three of my sons went through Cape schools. My middle son graduated from Shepherds, my two older from Cape High. My daughter went to Legumere Preschool, I'm very much here, this isn't a temporary residence. You know, I plan on using this house full-time once my kids finish school, and I have a daughter who's a junior in high school, and a son who's in the seventh grade, so, you know, you never know, I might end up sending him to Shepherds too. So it's not a summer residence, it's not a temporary residence, and I'm not from New York, so... Jackie and Dave, I want you to know that it was with great consideration to your side of the property that we did all these, and we've been doing them for about five months, because I don't want to get any closer to you, I never wanted to obstruct your views. In fact, when we decided to take down the trees in the back, I thought, great, Jackie and Dave will be happy because they'll have a better view. By bringing the roof to one height, the garage, as it is now, in that end of the property, is lower than, than anything right now. So we aren't going to be obstructing your view any more than it is now, in my mind's eye, because it's, the roof is where it is, and so it's just going to be that way further out, and it's going to be the same height, it's just going to go for the whole house. The garage is now just the one-story garage, so it will come up, that roof will come up. So, but in, insofar as the square footage, I mean, in all honesty, initially, we've always had three bedrooms in the basement. Three bedrooms, one bathroom, and, um, a gym, no, no, that, that's the bedroom. Three bedrooms and a bathroom. Then, for all intent and purposes, that house has only had two bedrooms. There's one bedroom on the main floor, and then there's a bedroom on the second floor, so that's one, two, and then three, four, five. So what we're doing is we're taking the bedrooms out of the basement, we're dividing the second floor, heretofore only had one bedroom and one bathroom, and we're making that space into three bedrooms and one bathroom. Removing the master bedroom from the side that's closest to the Allens, to the opposite side, because we, we have more room there. And, you know, we wanted to have a master, um, suite, bedroom suite, over the garage for quite some time. And it's just, you know, since we're tearing down the garage, it seemed like, you know, a natural thing to do. The amount of times the house has been built onto, these people can probably speak to that much better than me. Judging by what it looks like inside, there have been three additions, I don't know, I mean, we, we actually have a roof inside the ceiling. And so, and every time somebody built onto the house or remodeled the house, they did something big. You know, like, they wired the house, or they plumbed the house. So this is just a great opportunity for us to make the entire house much more user-friendly. It's, it, the way it is now, it's just all chopped up into little bits, and we never knew what was behind the walls on, until recently. So I mean, it's not our objective to obstruct anyone's views, it's just our objective to make our house so that it's a home for us, you know, and keeping in mind, I, I mean, we're pulling back, on the Allen's side, we're actually pulling back. You know, so, and we're raising the roof because right now, it's, it's like little teeny-person space there, it's like four foot tall. You know, so, I mean, I hope that addressed the questions, I don't know if any of you have any additional...
Thank you, Ms. McNulty, does, does, any other questions from the board?
Can I ask one more, sorry?
Of course.
Um, if I'm looking at this first map.
Okay.
The existing house, can you tell me roughly where people live?
The people here?
Yeah, sure, if you don't mind. No? So, two here. And then one here?
Can we turn?
These folks right here, they...
Joanna, you have to share.
I will. Why don't you hold it up? Oh, I like it.
Two lights terrace and Beacon Lane, okay? So, the panel behind me, and then across the corner, from the corner, so they're not supposed to be here. The Allens, they're right next door. And this real lane lives over here, lives across the street, and then, right here.
Thank you.
If you have any other stuff to add for us all, there's a, a plot map.
Yeah. That's a good point.
This question regards to the elevation increase, the addition. It said the elevation is going to increase, so I was just trying to show the roof line.
Can you come to the, I, just when you're not at a microphone, it's not, it's not picked up for the...
And the whole town can't hear you.
No, it was just for clarification, was all, just, you had mentioned the elevation for, where you, we're looking to put the garage on Two Lights Road, and that the elevation would have to go up, and I think it would have to go up considerably because of the drop-off. I just didn't know with that new addition, if it would have the same roof, roof height as what you're considering raising one foot for the whole house, so, or is that, with the elevation, could that roof line actually be higher than what it is, what you're planning on for the house?
Can I answer, Brian?
You can't answer, but you do need to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Do I have to leave, or can I stay with Paul? So I should, you know, just trying to understand that.
Essentially, it's all going to be even, so this is where, this is, this is the deck, okay, the deck is getting removed halfway. This is the garage, the garage right now is at this, and it's coming even with the, the roof line of the highest point of the house right now.
Right, so the whole, the highest point of the house.
Will be the whole house.
Will be the whole house, and then as well as the whole addition, right?
But it's linear more than it is, it's a little bit back, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Right, but it's all the same, so looking out...
Looking out, you'd end up seeing the McDonald's house, this is going to be like in front of, like, the trees that are in front of the McDonald's. Like, I have three giant pines that block the Mc-, you know, they're in between my house and the McDonald's.
Yeah.
So this would be, looking, they would go back to where those pines are.
Right, so you know how the house, right now, you've got the house, we've got the little bit of the deck area that's, the stairs are taken off, and you're looking to build that out for the whole house, and then the roof line, that part of it, then it drops down, and then the garage is a little bit lower too, but now all that's going to be all, that all height, and that's what we were referring to. Just, you know, that, that roof line is going up quite a bit from where it is today, just to have the whole...
To have it even with where it is.
Even with the whole, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity.
Thank you, thank you. Unless there's any other comments from the public, uh, we'll close the, uh, the public portion of, uh, the, the meeting on, on this issue, and, um, we can open it up to, uh, board discussion. Anyway, I'd like to start, anybody have any comments? Well, I guess, uh, you know, I am mindful of, uh, the fact that, that the, that the, uh, the, the reason this is before us is, um, be- because of the, the, the existing non-conformity and the, and, uh, enclosure of that upper deck, I guess is really what raises it, and that, at the end of the day, the setback, although it's misstated in the application, um, is going from, I guess, six feet, Ben, from, from your measurements to, to nine feet from that, from that property line, so, um, you know, from, from, from that perspective, you know, it, you know, I, I guess I understand that, you know, it's, it's not increasing the, the, the non-conformity, which is, you know, one of the tests here, I, I think that, um, I, I guess I'm still a, a little bit unclear on what the total gross square footage is for, um, for this replacement, and I, I mean, I think a lot of the questions tonight have been all, dancing all around that, and, and I think at the end of the day, what we're really left with is, that the level of, of increase that, that's allowed under the ordinance, and, you know, doing some, for calculations on their, on their schematic drawings on exactly how high the, you know, I think, I think for, for many of us, it's, it's how high the ridge line is, is going to be, not so much at its highest point, but from its lowest point. And I think it's that issue that, um, I'm hearing, um, is, is a bit of a sensitivity with some of the neighbors. And I can, I can understand that. But I, but I think from a, um... Go ahead. I, I, what I'm wrestling with is, is from an, an ordinance perspective, is, you know, Section 3 Reconstruction or Replacement talks about the non-conforming structure.
or Replacement talks about the non-conforming structure, may limit, reconstruction of a non-conforming structure not in compliance with the above limitations, and that's if it is going to increase the square feet or floor area, which we understand it will, may be permitted, provided that such reconstruction is in compliance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent as determined by the zoning board, in accordance with the purpose of this ordinance, and no case shall a structure be reconstructed or replaced so as to increase its non-conformity. It goes on, in determining whether the building reconstruction or replacement meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, the zoning board of appeals shall consider the physical condition and type of foundation present. The section of the ordinance seems to only speak to the setback, and they're actually decreasing the setback. Now, there's a, the volume, the volume that encroaches on the setback may be increasing because they're filling it in. Right now, it's mostly a deck, well, it's a deck and some of the house, and now they're bringing it back but filling it in.
But it's anecdotal.
That's true. Right.
It looks like it, the volumes increased, but we don't know that for a fact.
That's true. But...
The last paragraph of Section 3 points us to section, the criteria in Section 2, which does include impacts on views.
Right, that's, that should say B2. In my version, it refers back to the same.
Oh, that's helpful.
But, no, and that adds the indetermining whether the building relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, size of the lot, slope of the land.
I don't think there's any question but that the volume of the structure over in that non-conforming area is increasing on that, as shown on that south elevation on SK3, like this little area. I don't know how much it's increasing by, but it certainly appears that that's increasing. I know certainly that volume over and around the garage is increasing as well, but my understanding is that we can't really look at that because it's not in the non-conforming area. And I also, from the map, it appears that that little area that is non-conforming, increasing volume, is right in the Lane and Allen kind of sightlines. I'm not sure whether it's in your sightline or not, it doesn't look like it, but I don't, I don't think you'll be able to see it over the garage. And I'm just struggling with how, how much and whether we can consider that, because we haven't done that before.
I mean, it seems to me that the only part we can really be focused on is the part where it encroaches on, the setback.
Yeah.
The part on the other side by the garage, it is increasing, but, I mean, the ordinance has height limitations, and it's within those height limitations, I don't think that is really properly before the board.
I don't either. I agree with you.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I'll put my observation in. Again, I agree with you, Joanna, that the criteria in Section 2 there does bring views into the equation. But, and I, I understand that sort of enclosing that deck area could have an impact on views. But, when I look at that west elevation, it doesn't appear to me that the area that we're talking about, that deck area that's being enclosed, that is within the setback, is going to be what's limiting views. I think it's, it's the increase in height of the garage, like you said. So, whether or not that area is actually enclosed or not, I don't think it's gonna, it doesn't appear to me like it's going to have a big impact on either saving or eliminating someone's view.
Well, except for maybe the Allens, if they're right here. I don't know where, I can't tell where their house is.
Yeah, it's hard to, it is hard to see what their, which direction the views are.
Well, I think they're...
I don't know. Yeah, it's just...
I think they're there and there, I think. And there's the west, there's the west elevation, there's, so it's there, and it's there. There, I mean...
Yeah, you just want to be blocked by this roof.
Because I think...
And this is the worst one.
It's this, it's that. It's that, yeah. Four, for the lanes.
Down here.
I don't know if it's for the Allens, I can't tell.
But I mean, that's more, the Allens, it's more...
Okay, they're sideways.
I mean, they're...
Yeah, right.
And, I mean, the view could be impacted by this, but that's not the structure that's encroaching, or the part of the structure that's encroaching.
I've got the same concerns. I mean, it does appear to me to be, first off, an expansion of the non-conforming area of the home. And then you get into the view analysis, and limited information we have, I think, tends to show that there's going to be some encroachment on view. And I guess the question is then, what do we do about it? I mean, I think we've talked extensively about how we, we lack a little bit of information that would be helpful. More square footage or volume calculation would be helpful. More information on actually site and view, I think, would be helpful. So, and again, being brand-new to the board, I don't know whether the board has at times given applicants an additional opportunity to bring more information at the subsequent meeting, or whether we just act tonight and let the chips fall where they may, but want to throw that out there as a possibility as well.
I mean, from the perspective of obstruction of views from the existing non-conformity and the expansion, at least of the roof line of the existing non-conformity, I don't necessarily think it's the applicant's obligation to come forward with how much view that's going to be obstructing. We've heard some comments from abutters that they're concerned about it, but, you know, nobody's come forward with specific, you know, evidence or anything before the board that shows, right now, we can see this. If we, if the roof line has changed, we're not going to be able to see that. And I think in the past, we have heard some specific, you know, testimony before the board discussing, we are no longer going to be able to see Cascade Day.
Well, I certainly heard Mr. Allen say that he wouldn't be able to see the lighthouse.
That's true. It's the board's discussion.
Well, I guess, I guess a couple, one of the things I did hear is that I think the chimney elevation was going to remain unchanged, how that factors into whatever our decision is, I just want to note that. And then, I'm not sure it's, it's a, it's even, well, it's not before us, but I think there's still some questions to where the driveway is going. And I think I'm hearing the applicant saying that it's going to remain on Beacon Lane, but I think in the, in the plan, or at least the way it's, the plan is configured, it's the garage doors are going to be facing Lighthouse Point Road, so, you know, it'd be nice to, I guess, get that pinned down, because I think as it relates to, you know, you know, one of the criteria, slope of the land, or even, you know, the potential for soil erosion, I think where they're going to lay the, you know, where the driveway is going, you know, may have some impact, certainly on the slope of the land, because I think I heard in public comment that the grade is...
But again, is that, that's the other side of the house?
Other side of the non-conformity.
Yeah, I mean, what's before us is, I mean, as Ben mentioned, we're here because of the change in the non-conformity. So, I don't think, again, I don't think it's really before the board where the driveway is, or how the driveway, I mean, either the driveway can go there or can't go there, it's not a variant, I mean, we're not, there's not a variance.
It's not a variance, yeah.
It's not a non-conformity that we're, we're being asked to approve. It just, it is what it is.
You know, from my perspective, we are being asked to look at a set of criteria that are in here, in Section 19-4-4 dot, capital B, dot 2. And those do specify that we look at the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system, if any, and other onsite soils suitable for septic systems, the impact on views, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. And the plans that we have before us give us sufficient information to address some of those criteria and not all of those criteria. And to my mind, that's what I'm struggling with. And certainly, we can't, we're not the planning board, we don't look at all of the things that the planning board looks at, that's not our jurisdiction. We can't say, yes, you can put your driveway here, or no, you can't, but we also do need to look at what our criteria are as they apply to this overall impacts to the non-conforming area, such that that's being complied with to the greatest extent practical. And I do think that relocating the driveway will then be going into additional area of the property, so it does have some bearing on what we're doing, as do kind of all of these other things that we're talking about.
But, I mean, the beginning of that paragraph is indetermining whether the building relocation in this, in this instance, reconstruction, meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. I mean, that's, I'm still struggling with how that, how, where the driveway is, that's just something else that the homeowner is considering doing as part of an overall project.
Which we're reviewing because there are non-conforming setbacks. So then if we say, we're just looking very narrowly at this one area where you're out of compliance with the setback, we're not going to look at the driveway, which is going into setbacks over here, despite the fact that the existing garage, as shown, is within the setbacks on the front, and that's shown as part of the area that's going to be deleted, it just becomes a little, without knowing this is exactly where this is going to go, it becomes a little bit difficult to say, here are the impacts on the non-conforming area, on the, on the non-conformity with regard to the setbacks, when the driveway might be here, or it might be over here, we're not really sure. Like, if you look at that SK1, which is the existing structure, it looks to me like the front of the garage, the existing garage, is being taken off, and that's being counted as part of the, what is now non-conforming that's coming out, the black shaded area.
Right, they're decreasing the non-conformity by the garage.
Right. And so we're assuming, but then part of it is staying for, I guess, a front entry, that part in blue that's also shaded.
Correct, I mean, that's how I read the plan.
And so, but then if that existing driveway is staying there, I just think that, to me, where the driveway is going is relevant to the analysis of the non-conformity, given that right now, it's in a non-conforming area. And it's showing as coming off.
You're saying because of the driveway is in a non-conforming...
No, but the garage, and where the driveway is now.
Right. And the driveway is going to move, presume, I mean, the garage is moving, so the driveway...
Maybe, but we don't know. So we're counting, I guess we're counting in the ledger of deduction of non, reduction of non-conformity, part of this garage and the current location of the driveway. But we don't know over here where the driveway is going to go. So how can we count it kind of both ways? And say, we're not going to look at the new driveway, because that's in a conforming area, but we're going to count that one driveway.
But now you're talking about the driveway, which is always...
And the garage.
Well, but they're separate, I mean, the garage is the garage, and that's a structure that is either conforming or non-conforming. The driveway is going to be outside of the area in which you can build on the property, because it gets you from the house out to the street. So, the new garage is all within, it's all conforming, it's all within the setback. So, there's going to be a driveway to that garage, and where it goes, I don't, I don't, we don't know where it goes, and I, that's obviously an issue, but is that an issue before us?
Is there a slide from the applicant saying, the driveway is going here? Is there, are there other pieces of information that you're specifically looking for that might perhaps help?
Can I ask, can I just say, I'll leave the driveway where it is?
Well, I mean, that's something, I mean...
The driveway can't stay where it is, right? I mean...
And we could obviously put conditions on our, well, not obviously, we could consider putting conditions on our approval of the request, but I'm not sure that we have, I'm not sure that we have that power to do that under the ordinance and what's before us. I mean, it's a driveway, and we're not being asked, it has nothing to do with the conformity or non-conformity of the structure on the property.
Well, I guess feel, now I feel like I'm, we're starting to chase, I'm starting to chase my tail, because, yes, it's limited, we're being asked to look at, at the, at the reason for, you know, we're looking at the non-conformity, but in looking at the definition of relocation, it's asking you, it is suggesting we have to take other things into consideration in looking at that non-conformity. And Joanna's gone through them four different times, you know, and basically, it's in the application. Plus justify why the relocation, reconstruction, and/or replacement should be granted based on the size of the lot, the slope of the land, blah, 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 blah. So, either, either we're taking the criteria into account, or we're ignoring it. And I don't think we're ignoring it, so, you know, to me, you've got to take the, you know, you've got to take the entire application and the plan into consideration, at least for purposes of evaluating the criteria.
Can I make a point?
Absolutely.
I understand what you're wrestling with, you know, on one hand, you're looking at the west side of the house, and on the other hand, you're looking at the complete application. And it makes sense, on one hand, the applicants could have come in with an application to the zoning board, saying, we want to rebuild the west side of our house. And they could have come here, only presented the west side of their house, infilling that one area, raising the roof peak of that one area, but they presented their whole plan. I don't think they were required to do that, they could have got a zoning board approval to rebuild that one section of their house, and then, you know, they could have executed the building permit for the other 80% of the house without zoning board review. But that's not how the application's presented, it's presented as one project... It's presented as one project. So I think the zoning board needs to sort of decide, are we going to, are we going to look at it as the whole property plan as presented? Or are we going to limit it to the west side of the house?
Oh, I'll give you my opinion on that. I sort of agree with you, Ben. I think in determining whether the building relocation meets the setback to the greatest extent practical, practicable, practical.
You know, I think they've, I think they've actually improved the condition by moving the building farther away from the property boundary. And, you know, I don't necessarily think the location of the driveway is going to change the non-conformity. So, in my mind, it's more of an, it's a narrower issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way that I'm leaning. I'm looking at, I think the language of the ordinance focuses on the setback and what setback they're encroaching on. And the only one that is, is non-conforming, well, the only one that will still be non, the only one that is, at least from what I believe we've heard, the only one that is potentially changing, and the change will, you know, potentially negatively impact a butters, is the one on the west side. I mean, the other one is decreasing the non-conformity. So my view is we're folk, we should be focused on the west side. And that's basically to the exclusion of the rest of what's going on in the project. I mean, point being, kind of to follow up on what Ben was saying, they could have come with, you know, a two-phase project. And if the first phase of the project was dealing with this, the part, the non-conformity, we would have dealt with that. And then they could have just gone directly to Ben for a building permit on the remainder of the project. And as long as it met the, you know, the requirements for the issuance of a building permit, it would never be before us. It would, it would be out of our hands. And the fact that they're doing the entire house at the same time, to me, doesn't mean we're allowed to now basically consider the entire project. Because most of the project is not increasing any non-conformity. It's not even dealing with the non-conformity.
I would agree with you if that was the application in front of us, but it's not. And so then, if you look at the application that's in front of us and the standards, then how do you ignore two-thirds of the application?
Because the language in the ordinance starts with, well, the language in that, in point two, the relocation, which we read into the reconstruction, in determining whether the building reconstruction meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, where we are here to consider the setback.
So if we look.
The non-conformity of the setback, not the garage on the other side of the property, which they happen to be building.
So if we look at just that non-conforming piece on the.
West.
West side, particularly on that northwest corner, do we think that it's meeting the setback to the greatest practical extent? Historically, we have approved a similar kind of addition where there was only an increase to volume in non-conformity. But in those instances, we didn't have record complaints about impacts to the view shed.
That's true. I mean, the, to me, the, it boils down to the view. And whether or not, I mean, it, they're increasing the height. I mean, they're filling it in. It's now a second level deck, and it's being filled in. And it's, it's going to be, the height is increasing, I mean, without a doubt, at that point.
We don't know exactly how much, but it looks like.
I mean.
The garage is going up five feet, three inches, and it looks like the garage is higher than the current.
But now, from a pure west elevation, if you look at the west elevation profile, it almost, looking at it, you know, head-on directly from the west.
It's a wedge.
It's almost irrelevant because they're going, they're building up higher at the east end, which would be obstructing the view anyway.
Not the view to the lighthouse, though.
Well, I mean, let me look at that. Do you know where the lighthouse is?
Well, I don't know.
It should be to the, I'm thinking it's to the right of the chimney. Oh, that one.
It would be nice to know that, wouldn't it?
Google map it, Mike.
No, yeah.
I'm not having much luck on that.
Way out there.
I don't think we can pull that up.
No.
I don't think we're supposed to do that.
Do what?
I mean, we're not supposed to be looking for our own evidence. Sorry, sorry, John. I would like to know where the lighthouse is.
Sorry.
If, if it's coming down to the view, and I would agree that that's probably the only point here that the board, you know, that's the key point for the board here to consider, and it's a point the board has to consider, is the view. I mean, it is possible to table this and allow both the applicant and the neighbors to come back with any evidence that supports either, either point next month if you don't feel like you have enough evidence to make that decision. In my opinion, if, if the, if the neighbors look at, you know, the conforming portion of the structure, that can legally go up to thirty-five feet, I don't think the infilled portion, the infill of the non-conforming portion is going to affect the view. It will certainly be a slight effect of the view of the overall project. But, but most of that is conforming. And I'm not sure if the non-conforming portion will change the view. My guess would be that it wouldn't. But, you don't want to make a decision off of my guess.
Well, at the same time, we can get some harder numbers on actual volume of what's going on here, whether it's the square footage or the height differential between what's existing and what's proposed.
Well, we've got, we've got the height numbers. I'm not, I'm not sure how the volume or area plays into the approval. But we've, I mean, we've got the height, we've got the, we've, we know the vertical expansion of the structure and how it will.
What we don't have on here, actually, is on these elevations, what the increase is for that corner. That's what I've been struggling with all along, is that the number, the existing ridge line for the garage is provided. The existing ridge line for the main highest portion of the house is provided, and the proposed ridge line is provided. But the existing baseline for that deck that's being infilled is not provided. So one might guess at the increase to the proposed ridge line at being roughly eight to ten feet, but it's not provided.
Well, we have the south elevation profile.
Yes.
That doesn't show what you're looking for?
No, because I think it's this corner right here, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So what is this number here? The height of this back piece, the existing deck level? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, one can guess.
It's a scale drawing, so we can say what that vertical increase is.
Kind of.
Why, why kind of? I mean, can't we just measure it?
Yeah.
It's just under three-quarters of an inch. So, an eighth of an inch, that's one. Two, four, yeah, six feet, just, just under, just under six feet on that section.
Does that include the panhandle?
Excuse me?
Does that include the panhandle? I think there's a, that's not a huge difference, but.
They're measuring the height.
Oh, it was just measuring the height, okay.
Then that's from the ridge line, that's on the south elevation, from that lower ridge line up to the proposed ridge line? Not from the deck elevation?
And the reason I said kind of is because that's not making a ton of sense to me, given that the existing ridge line shown for the garage is eighty feet, six inches. The existing ridge line, sorry, the proposed ridge line is shown as eighty-five feet, nine inches, which is a difference of five feet and three inches. And if you look across, that deck elevation looks substantially lower than the existing ridge line of the garage. But what you're telling me is that it's only a matter of inches lower.
Well, the deck, you want to know from the, from the floor of the deck to the, to the proposed ridge?
Right, which you just told me was.
No, 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 he was doing it from the, from the ridge.
He essentially gave you the dimension of that white box.
Here?
Yes.
Isn't that what I wanted, the top?
Well, the deck is actually lower than that.
Oh, I was talking about here.
Yeah, no, that's about, well.
But that doesn't look right if you look over. Doesn't it look substantially lower than the existing ridge line of the garage?
Looks about the same to me. I mean, slightly lower, but it's tough to tell.
Hard to say.
Anyway. If you look at the pictures too, it looks.
Looks like about thirteen from the, from the floor of the deck.
That's better.
Thirteen? Yeah, that makes more sense. It's like, if you look at the picture, you can tell that the garage is a lot higher than that.
Yeah, from the deck, that's, yep.
And does the net matter to us? Say, what we've heard is that the setback is actually going to increase by three feet, I think. So is that a consideration that we need to take into consideration? Is, you know, what is actually the net effect going to be? We know that the property proposal is to go up, but what is the net impact of actually shrinking the, out the setback a little bit? I don't know. Maybe that's something we want to talk about, too. Another reason for more information.
Can you say that again, Mike?
I can try. Do we, do we want to take into consideration what the net effect is here? We've got, I believe that the testimony that is established that we've got a current encroachment, nine feet into the setback.
Which is decreasing by three feet.
Decreasing by three feet. So, you know, if we have somebody who does the actual calculation on what that decrease means to the overall renovation, at least with respect to that portion that is in the non-conforming space, is that going to have an impact on the bill?
You know, try to take a big step back and think that the setback, the non-conformity is decreasing in terms of the encroachment on the setback. And the reason that, I mean, the non-conformity is decreasing unless we're talking about, you know, volume of non-conformity.
In the view.
And the view, but.
In the view.
In the view.
Volume in the view. We're moving volume.
Right.
Down low to volume in the view. Probably bigger volume. Looking at the south elevation, if you, I mean, I suck at math. I'll be the first to admit it. But this little piece looks, I'm guessing the volume is slightly smaller than this volume, slightly.
I mean, so are we, it sounds like what I'm hearing generally from the board is that the inclination is that more information may be needed? Or does somebody want to make a motion to approve or not approve the request?
Personally, I don't think, for me, I'm not sure there could, the applicant or the neighbors could provide anything that's going to give us that, you know, that's going to change my decision one way or another. But, you know, I think by pulling it away from the property line, Mrs. McNulty has, as has been mentioned, is sort of reducing the non-conformity. And, and that's what, you know, that's what we're looking at here. Unless we're going to require some sort of view shed study or something like that. I mean, if someone were to give you a volume number, what would we do with that?
I guess what I'm struggling with is overall not having an issue with the bulk of the project, but having concerns about shifting the impacts to, from the non-conformity to an area which is technically problematic from an ordinance perspective, but not problematic from a view perspective, to a place that is problematic from a view perspective.
Yeah, really, my comments relative to the view are not on the westerly side of the house. The view on the westerly side, where the nonconforming area is, the roof line will go up, the house will fill out, and the view might be impacted a few months of the year when there's no leaves on the trees. But other than that, that nonconforming side on our boundary, if the house goes up, it really doesn't impact our views. That's not what my comment was relative to. It's the other end of the building.
How about the other neighbor?
I'm sorry?
How about the other neighbors?
Ken would have to speak to that, or should speak to that.
Thank you. The raising of the garage by however many feet it is clips a portion of our view of the water, but given the horrible condition of the house now, almost anything would be an improvement, and I would urge you to approve this plan.
Thank you.
It takes us a long time sometimes, but we really do appreciate your comments. We really do.
So that will close-
We're done.
That will close the, that will close the re, oh, sorry, before we, yes.
I'm Susan Johnston, and I live at Two Lighthouse Point Road, which is, to your question, diagonally across. So my question is not so much about the view, because we basically, that won't impact a view of the lighthouse, the lighthouse is behind us, but I'm concerned more about the driveway situation. So my question would be, if the driveway remains the same on Beacon where it is now, it's a very short little driveway, and I haven't looked at all of your big elevations, but it would have to loop around the house, and I'm concerned about what would happen to the grade in the drop-off. And I couldn't, I didn't see, I don't know, and maybe Paul could answer this question, there's three big evergreen trees on the road, big ones, that, and I didn't know if it was on, the driveway would come in on this side closer to Beacon or on the other side. And I think that that's an important consideration, because I'm concerned about the grade, it's a big drop-off there. So would there be, if the whole garage got lowered, you know, if it came in from the other side, the garage maybe would be lowered, I don't know, but you'd wind up kind of with a wall of soil possibly, you know, not very attractive. And I don't know that that's your venue or had anything to do with any of this. And I also, thanks for all your thoughtful work here. And I also want to commend McNulty's. I think it's great that they're redoing the house, because it looks awful, and, you know, and I think that that's a really, really good, and I'm sure that this is all going to get resolved so that everyone will be happy, right? I know you will. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. So that will close the reopening of the public comment.
And I think on the driveway front, what I heard from Ben, basically, is that that's a whole separate application process.
Yes.
And if there are issues with that application involving setbacks, and maybe it ends up back with us, probably that would be dealt with by public works, I think you said?
Yes.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve the application.
A second.
Is there any further discussion that we'd like to have on the-
I think we need some more.
All in favor? All right, so the application has been approved six to nothing, and let's find the fact. Go to the finding of fact. All right. Finding of fact, this is a request to remodel and expand a single-family dwelling per section 19-4-3.B.E.3 of the zoning ordinance at map U-15, Lot 45, Two Beacon Lane, applicant Paula McNulty. Number two, Paula McNulty is the owner of record of the property at map U-15, Lot 45, at Two Beacon Lane. Additional findings of fact, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system and other on-site soils suitable for septic systems, the impact on views, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. The proposed structure will not increase the nonconformity of the existing structure. The proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Are there any other proposed findings of fact?
I would like to add one, that the shortest distance from the structure to the property line will be increased from approximately nine, approximately six feet to approximately nine feet.
The shortest distance from the structure to the property line will be increased from approximately six feet to approximately nine feet. Okay, an additional finding is the shortest distance from the structure to the property line will be increased from approximately six feet to approximately nine feet. Any others? All right, should we vote on those?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have we done?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Anybody second? All in favor? We're done.